Sorry. Election of Vice-Chairman, I'd like to propose councillor Trish Jamison.
Can I second that, Chairman?
Put it to the vote, those in favour. That's unanimous, thank you very much. Oh, sorry. Shall I have to sit there beside you, I want me to sit? You want me to move along? Do you want me to move up one? Remove the canyons. Keep moving.
Apologies, Chairman, received from councillor Fox. Councillor David Fag said he would be late, or he may be late, he obviously is.
And item five, minutes of the Politician Results Committee, 5th of April 2017, to confirm as a correct record.
Chairman, item 385 on page 10 of the minutes, it was talking about disposal of a small area of amenity, green space, and it was resolved the consideration of this matter be deferred to the next meeting of the committee. This hasn't been put on this agenda, and I'd like it noted. I did have a reply from the officers to say that they have got the information, so I'd like it noted so that it's good, make sure it comes to the next meeting.
Thank you very much, so I propose that we have that.
Chairman, if I could suggest, when you get to the forward plan, ensure that that's written into the forward plan as well for the next meeting.
I was going to say, if that's a proposal, I'm happy to second.
Thank you, Chairman, and good evening, members. Yes, this report presents members with the year-end position for the revenue budget, the capital budget, and also the council's reserves position. Section three really deals with the revenue outturn, and also puts it in the context of the medium-term financial strategy. Members will see in section three that the calculated revenue surplus for 2016-17 is £602,000, and this represents 1.92% of the council's gross budget. The outturn position will help Christchurch maintain its strong financial position. The surplus of £602,000 plus the budgeted headroom we had built into the budget of £488,000 means that actually the council will be adding £1.1 million to unallocated reserves as part of the outturn process. This will enable the council to either fund corporate priorities in the coming months, or potentially to smooth some of the peaks in funding gaps that the medium-term financial strategy identifies from 2019-20 onwards. The net position itself, the surplus, is made up of a variety of variances, as you would imagine, and there's an awful lot of detail in the appendices, appendices two to 11, split down really by service, everything that's gone in to make up that net position. And in the appendices, you'll see also that certainly the vast majority of the significant variances provision has been made for them in the 2017-18 budget, the budget for the current year, so that's obviously a good and prudent thing. In terms of, at a high level, what caused the net surplus, we had some very good savings with some of our partnerships that we're involved with. So Dorset Waste Partnership, for example, saved £95,000 on the financial year. Star Valley and Pool Partnership saved £28,000. In addition to that, the council itself, budget managers, showed restraint in their spending, appropriate, of course, in a time of austerity and public sector cuts, which contributed significantly to the net surplus. The council had several additional income streams. We got an extra £107,000 from business rates, and car parking income was up by £161,000. There were, of course, cost pressures, and the most significant being reported to members throughout the year as part of the quarterly budget monitoring, we had some cost pressures with development management and leisure salaries. It's fair to say, particularly with leisure, that these were not the result of spend going up, they were a result of over-aggressive savings targets as part of the service review for leisure. But the outturn was positioned for them was as we predicted at quarter three. On page 14 is a table, which, if I could just direct you towards, please. Basically, within the net surplus of £600,000, there are several large one-off items. And the table at the top of page 14, it shows the effect. If we remove these one-off items that either won't happen again, or we've adjusted the budget for next year, things like the saving on the Dorset Waste Partnership business rate income, we go from a £600,000 surplus to £120,000. So that's really demonstrating that, take out the one-off items, the budget all but balanced for 2016-17. Now, that really tells us two things. It tells us that the 2017-18 budget, which is the starting point for the medium-term financial strategy, is soundly based. And it also shows that the headroom that we've got built into the medium-term financial strategy that helps the council balance its books in the next two financial years is achievable. And that therefore gives us some certainty over the council's financial position, at least up until 2019-20. The medium-term financial strategy itself is being reworked, but it currently shows a range of savings required in 2019-20, between £23,000 and £265,000. We have some different scenarios that model what the government might or might not do, what savings we may or may not achieve, and what inflation might hit the council. That's what gives us them ranges. The worst-case scenario is that between 2019-20 and 2022, we might have to save as much as £1.2 million out of the budget. So some financial stability for the next couple of years, and then obviously the NTFS does identify a budget gap. Much of that to do with the tariff that we have to pay the government in 2019-20. We refer to that as negative revenue support grants, because that's pretty much what it is. We used to get funding from the government, we will now be topping up their coffers so they can distribute the money elsewhere. There are still several uncertainties with regards to local government finance, which will impact on the council's position, they'll impact on the medium-term financial strategy, and we don't necessarily know the answer right now. And you'll see reference to them in paragraphs 3.13 and 3.14. We're still waiting to hear what 100% business rate retention will mean, and indeed when it will be implemented. We're still expecting at some point a fair funding review. And on a more local level, we're of course dilating the decision from the Secretary of State on their minded to decision for a local government reorganisation. So, you know, they have potentially significant effects on the financial position, and we will bring the medium-term financial strategy back to members of this committee in due course. The other two items that the report covers are capital and reserves. There's a brief summary of capital in section five, although appendix 12 does give you the full capital programme and what we spent in the year, what we've carried forward. Basically, very little change from when members approved the programme in February as part of the budget process, £6.7 million capital programme over five years, fully funded, leaving £117,000 unallocated. It is partly dependent on new homes bonus this year and next year, after which it will not be dependent on any of that funding, and indeed the council won't be dependent on new homes bonus in capital or revenue after 2018-19, which is good. It's a good place to be, because it's a volatile source of income. The government have been changing the amount that's paid by introducing, basically, baselines under which you won't get any new homes bonus, so it's good that the council is not going to be dependent on it for too much longer. In terms of reserves, there's a summary in section six. The council has a healthy reserves position. Again, there's a summary in appendix 13, which will show you that the council has nearly £12 million worth of reserves, since the 31st of March. It is a lot of money, but the majority of it is earmarked for specific things, specific things like the capital programme and various other initiatives and schemes that have been approved. Having said that, it does give Christchurch a solid financial base. You'll see that we do have 2.3 million of unallocated reserves in the balance sheet. Options to use them will be brought to members during 1718 as part of the medium-term financial strategy process. Chairman, that's probably enough of an introduction, and I'll take any questions.
Councillor Margaret Fitz. Sorry.
I've got two questions. The first one, just quite an easy one, really. Dorset Waste Partnership, you've got down as £95,000 savings. I was at the meeting the other week, and we actually were at 3.99%, it was £99,388.25. So that is just an estimate, that 95, is it?
No, that was the amount I was expecting back, perhaps the higher figure. They did top slice some of the savings marginally to top up their reserve for risk-based items, and perhaps that accounts for it. Okay. Well, that is good news indeed, and if we do, we've accrued £95,000 into the books for the financial year we've closed. If we get 99, that'll be a four-grand bonus in the new financial year.
If it's all right, I have a second question. Just a little bit, so there's confusion on my part, and I heard the new homes bonus you mentioned, and then I was trying to listen to a bit more about it. And just a bit of clarification, we all, or a lot of us, were at the seminar on Monday evening, and a question was put about new homes bonus. And my understanding was that actually the new homes bonus money that we were likely or could receive was quite substantial. That's what I was thinking, oh, that sounds good. But then you, I think I just heard you say, we might not be getting any. So I just wondered, sorry, I might have got that wrong, could you just clarify it?
Yeah, yes, of course. Sorry, we will still get new homes bonus. They have changed the rules, so we are getting substantially less than what we got before, because they've introduced a 0.4% baseline. So if our housing stock growth is below 0.4%, we won't get anything for that. But if we hit that baseline and then get growth over and above that, you will get homes, new homes bonus on them properties. So new homes in the borough will attract new homes bonus. The problem is, they've not only introduced the baseline that you have to get over to get anything, but they've also reduced the number of tranches you get. You used to get six years' worth, this year you're getting five years' worth of the payment, next year you're getting four. The worry is over the long term, whether over the long term it's sustainable. So, you know, whether in two or three years' time, what new homes bonus might look like then.
Sorry, one more thing on, if you don't mind, just come back to that. This baseline, whatever, the 4%, whatever, is that an annual thing, or over what period? So you've got to build X amount of houses per year, yeah?
That's exactly right. So we send off a form to the government that basically says, this was the amount of properties we had last year, this is the amount of properties we've got this year. They do the calculation, if it's growing by less than 0.4%, no new homes bonus.
That's the Colin Bungie.
Thank you, Chairman. So from what you're saying, for instance, the huge development up on Rochock Hill, if that is phased carefully by the developer, we will get no gain from it at all, because it'll, each year it'll be, could be below the percentage that the government require?
Well, I think, the year that they brought in the change, the year 2017-18 we're just looking at, we were just at the baseline. So with our, if you like, business as usual, planning the growth that we've got, we're at the baseline. So any big significant developments we get over and above the baseline, we will hopefully get our new homes bonus money for. The problem is, it's the long-term sustainability of a scheme like this that we're worried about. And I think my main point was, it's nice not to be reliant on it in our budgets. So we're not reliant on it in our recurring revenue, our service provision budget. We're only relying on it in our capital budget this year and next year. After that, anything we get, we can use for corporate priorities, projects, one-off spend. So I don't want to be alarming, so we're worried about the long-term sustainability of it. The government have certainly changed the rules, so we're getting less of it. But as things stand, as long as we get over that baseline, we will get our new homes bonus on each property that we build.
John Lough.
Debate, Chairman, if you finish questions. I just wanted to bring to members' attention and the, indeed the officers, because in particular I see that Lindsay Cass is here. I've been here 40 years now, and I've been on this council for 30 of them. The cost of this council of coast defence, and particularly the cliff repairs over that time, I think more than £25 million from memory, and probably approaching £30 million, most of which we got back from the government. We've got one or two problems that are happening now, and they are being dealt with in the budgetary procedure later tonight, and whatever. It's starting to concern me that with the passage of time, what we did 30 years ago, and Richard Mockruse was our engineer, and our engineers since have maintained, might, I only just bring it up, I say might, be indicating that there is a life to our work done on the cliff, the beaches themselves, the bottom of the cliffs protection, and the work that's done on the cliffs, and particularly the planting of the cliffs, has been very successful over those 30 years, in my view. But I am just concerned that something else will go on happening. As you can see, what happens through your budget procedure here, things that weren't anticipated just by the mechanics of what we're doing come up. But I've got an impression that they're starting to happen more often. And if it is a question, Chairman, as well, is it because we've gone through the timescale of the work that was done, that started a bit more than 30 years ago, and has gone through perhaps its lifetime scale? And we should be thinking about how we should make money available in future years so that we are able to do repairs when they are necessary, perhaps as soon as it's clear that they are necessary, and not get into the position where we keep coming back to this council for large chunks of money, which are coming out of the pot for things that go wrong, if I can describe it like that. But I wonder whether we should have an even larger pot for doing the repairs than we do now? Or will that stop us going back to government every time we get a fault which needs governmental support? If I make myself clear, Chairman?
Thank you, Chairman. Council officer's quite correct about the amount of money that we've spent. I mean, I haven't got the statistic that John's got over 30 years, but in the last three years, the total spend, both from the council and from the Environment Agency, has been about £1.6 million, so significant funds just in the last three years. Now, the council, you'll see in the reports before you, that there is £176,000 a year allocated in the council's capital programme for maintenance works, and some of that money is being used for the work that we're currently carrying out at Avon Beach and Friars Cliff Beaches, where we are doing some sand recycling back onto the beaches and repairing some of the groynes. We do have a, it's like a medium-term plan for future capital works, and the next big spend is in 2021, is the programme, and that is for replacing the timber groynes on the Avon and Friars Cliff Beaches with rock armour groynes. Now, that is estimated at about £2 million, and our current thinking is approximately £300,000 of that will need to be funded by this council. But the capital programme doesn't go as far as 2021, but there will be that fed into the budgeting process closer to the time.
Thank you.
So on the item before us, item six, the proposer, Sally Derram-Wilkes, please.
Oh, thank you, Margaret. Yeah, echo your thanks to the team for all the work they've done.
I'm very happy to second that proposal. I think we're in a very good position, and it's all due to the officers' hard work, and it's great, thank you.
Vice-Chairman councillor Trish Jamison.
Thank you, Chairman. Again, I think that congratulations to the officers for the work they've done. But one thing I would like to say is, can we ensure that people do realise that a lot, part of this is due to these one-off payments? You know, we don't want the public to think out there that, oh, we're going to make all this money every year, nice as it would be. But I think it should be sort of stressed that these are, some of these are one-off payments, because the, and you got within 1% of the budget, and I think that is brilliant. And so this is a bonus that can't be guaranteed to come again, and I think that's important, I know that.
Okay, thank you, Simon.
Thank you, Chairman. This report gives you the history of the Candle Store building, which I'm sure all of you will know, sits in the corner of Bank Close Car Park. And the council acquired it just over 20 years ago, I understand. Now, the Asset Optimisation Group has identified the site as being surplus to requirements and a potential liability in terms of ongoing maintenance and repair. So, and it's also been identified in the council's adopted town centre strategy as an area for improvements to create a gateway to the high street. The development of the site has been discussed by the member Town Centre Strategy Steering Group as well. Although the report describes the benefits of de-risking the site by obtaining a planning permission, in light of your comments, Chairman, I've reviewed the recommendations in the report and considered that the council should market the site without having first obtained a planning permission for housing. So the revised recommendation that I'm now making to you is to delete recommendation, little a, in the report, to delete the first line of recommendation b in the report. So basically, recommendation a becomes officers be instructed to market the site without any mention of planning permission, and recommendation b becomes the outcomes of any marketing be reported back to this committee for acceptance of any bids received and the decision to dispose of the site. At that point, I'll wait for questions, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on that from Mr Cass? Councillor Lucy Dedman.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. It's concerning the conclusion 5.1. I have read the brief very carefully, and I can't quite see in the document why we're saying retention in its current form, that's the building, and the use by the council isn't a sustainable position, and if not addressed now, will need to be in the future. I'm not saying that I'm against anything, I just couldn't see, you know, is it liable to fall down or something?
Well, Chairman, I'm sure those members who have ventured into this, into the building, it's in a fairly poor condition, and although it's not structurally unstable, it's not as if it's a hazard to people using the car park, but it clearly is in a poor state. It will require maintenance and repairs, and it's serving a very low-value purpose at the moment, largely storing, you know, the lighting from the Christmas light illuminations. So it just seems to be a useful asset owned by the council that isn't being used to its fullest potential, and hence the recommendation that we market it and dispose of it.
Councillor Sally Derram-Wilkes.
Thank you, Chairman. I wanted to make members aware at this point that I've had an email from the Matthews, and it has made me wonder how much they have been involved in this, because there is a party hall between the chairman. Their email says, we're concerned that the council are considering redevelopment of the former Candle Factory in Bank Close, which is also attached to our house and business. I understand it's up for discussion Wednesday. Now I've lost my email. Anyway, they've got various concerns, I'll have to find the email again. The devaluation of their homes, flats to rent, et cetera, it might be social housing, access to our house and business, the noise, and access to the future lane development will be lost. So, Chairman, I would like to know what discussions... So, um chairman, I would like to know what discussions have been had with them and any other neighbours and where the lanes development come into all of this now that has been on the cards for a long, long time, but that didn't happen. Not through our fault, I'd just say.
Um councillor Sally Darren-Wilkes, I can answer part of that myself because the lanes development, as far as I'm concerned, is dead. When we did the Fleury Lees development, that was meant to be part of the lanes and that was built um out in a completely different planning application. So I can't see any reason that we got the lanes or even why the lanes are mentioned at the moment because that's dead and buried as far as I'm concerned, it hasn't been mentioned for many years. And the main site that was going to develop into the lanes, the Fleury Lees was next to the, with the corn factory site, has been developed for elderly people's homes. So that has changed. Any other questions? Can Mr Cass please answer?
Yes, chairman, we haven't had any formal consultation with the Matthews family. Um as it happens, when I was down there with Ashley Harmon, just looking around the site, um a lady, I understand, was Mrs Matthews, um spoke to us. And in fact, it was I who said that the report is going to this meeting today. So that's where she would have picked up the fact that the report was coming this evening. Um but in terms of party walls, I mean, it's, it's a common issue with, with construction, particularly in cities, of course, um but equally in, in towns like Christchurch, where you do have party walls and there are very clear procedures for serving notice on, on neighbours and appointing surveyors who make sure that whatever your proposal to do to a party wall doesn't in any way affect the, the neighbours next door. And so that's a procedure that would be followed obviously by the purchaser. Um it isn't really for the council to adopt that now because obviously we haven't yet got the authority to market the site or to know what the development might be. But that would be a, a requirement that the, any developer would need to follow, um which is laid down very clearly in the Party Wall Act.
Thank you very much. Could I also ask a question? It's that, um, at the moment, your recommendation, does it include the whole site or additional car parking spaces?
Well, my recommendation would be to include the parking bays in front because without it, there isn't a frontage to the car park.
Margaret Fitz, please.
Thank you. Um I just want to ask about the two trees on the site. Um it says in three point one, that whilst they don't have tree protection orders on them, they are obviously within the conservation area and therefore consent is required to do any works on them. But it seems to me that if we, correct me if I'm wrong, if we agree to this recommendation that, that to submit a planning application for residential development, I'm, I'm looking at photos as well on page fifty-one, where you can see one of them looks quite large. Then presumably, we're assuming they, they'd have to go, wouldn't they, aren't we? So by agreeing to this, are we effectively basically saying that these trees will have to be sold anyway if we're agreeing to, for it to go for development?
No, chairman, that's not the case. Um you know, it'll be for the developer to come up with the layouts for their, their developments and to submit that to the um development management committee, to a planning control committee, um for that committee, because that committee is obviously charged with dealing with trees in the conservation area.
Councillor Sally Darren-Wilkes, please.
Thank you, chairman. Um can I ask the officer through you, what is the additional benefit to the council for actually, um his recommendation now to actually market the site without planning permission?
That the, you'll see in paragraph three point ten, um that there's some, at this, and also in paragraph three point eleven, that there are a range of figures there as the potential capital value of the site. Um now, the, the valuation that we have, um if this, if the site were developed for retail shop units is in the order of a hundred and fifty thousand pounds. And if it were developed for housing, somewhere between two hundred and four and two hundred and ten. And what I'm saying is that that should be for the market to determine what development goes on to the site. And we will only know its value when we receive any bids from, from the bidding process.
Ambassador Wantok.
Over the, over the years, we've had many requests from local community-based organisations to use the candle factory as their base because it's in the centre of town, obviously. That's been refused on many occasions, on every occasion, because the requisite from the borough to store equipment in it. Have we now got somewhere to put the equipment that's in there all of a sudden?
Well, we do have space at the recently refurbished Grange Road depot. You know, there is space, there are storerooms there. Um we have, um again, Ashley Harmon, who obviously isn't here this evening, is, is aware of the approaches there's been from, from community groups. And you're saying that although he's had discussions, there's no one ever come forward with a firm proposal um to, to, to use the site. But in truth, you know, there must be better places in the borough for, you know, for most of those activities, certainly storing Christmas lights. It does seem to be a, a, a very odd use of a very useful prime site in a town centre. Um and, you know, I'm, I'm having looked at the sites literally in the last week, um I'm satisfied that we've got space in the Grange Road stores to put the Christmas lights. A lot of the other stuff, to be honest, is, it's questionable why we're even keeping it, because a lot of it is, is just, um, to be honest, junk, chairman.
Vice Chairman, councillor Trish Jameson.
Thank you. Uh another question on the marketing. Um you will go out to market, are you going to just go out to market this as a development site? Would it, I mean, can it not be considered for somebody using it as office space or shop or whatever?
Yes, chairman, that, that is the intention, that it would be, it wouldn't be any prescribed use. It would be for the bidders to decide, you know, what is, in their view, both deliverable from planning and, and, and affordable and, you know, a good return on their investments. So that is what the market will, will dictate when we go, or if we go to, 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 to bids to the marketplace.
Councillor Corrin Bunce.
Thank you, chairman. Yeah, I, I question the term a load of junk in there. Um we, we store a lot of the gazebos in there that are used at the food festival and at various other events in the town. Also, uh crowd protection barriers are stored in there, which are bought out for the Christmas parade and that sort of thing. Now, that's fine. Yes, they could be stored down at Grange or, or again, really Grange, but somewhere. But every time they're going to be used, they're going to have to be brought in by transport. And at the food festival, that cleared away at night and put up again the next morning. So are we going to have lorries having to go backwards and forwards? Bringing the stuff in because the volunteers are down there at sort of half past six in the morning, erecting those stands for the food festival and that. So it is a useful facility and it does concern me. So perhaps that can be answered.
Councillor Lesley Dedman, please.
Yes, thank you, chairman. I'm just a bit concerned that, having seen all this document and the proposed resident, residential development, which was being, I think by, was it Spire Architects or somebody? If we now go back on what the recommendation was, which was to go to ourselves for planning permission? If we now market it without, with, as a building, are we not indicating? Or is there not a hint that in fact, oh, well, if you buy it, you'll get it cheap? I mean, I don't know quite where I'm going with this, chairman, except that I feel it's, I feel it's, um. Yeah, I'm uneasy with it. I'm uneasy with taking the planning permission bit out, to be honest, because now we've got this lovely drawing. You know, somebody will come along and just say, well, you know, I'll give you the, the price for the site without planning permission, come to the council, get, oh, can't prejudge obviously the planning permission. And then I'm just uneasy about, um, about that side of it. So I don't know what reassurances I could have on that.
Well, chairman, the, the, the main reason for the change is the conversations that we had at the chairman's briefing, where you expressed concerns around the, about the housing development and, you know, and so rather than be prescriptive by, because the, the danger of getting the planning permission for housing is that will lead people in that direction. And it might be that this, another, another developer may want to market it or use it rather for, for, sorry, for commercial purposes. So the, the danger of getting a planning permission is that you sort of push the development in that direction. Doing it without planning permission, um then you've got a completely free rein over what could go there.
Councillor David Flag, the leader of the council.
Thank you, chairman. Uh I just want to follow on from councillor Bunce's comment about the storage of equipment. Um the Monday market barriers and signage, is that kept there? If, so if, if, you know, if that's decanted, where are we going to keep it? And is, have we got anywhere perhaps in Saxon Square that can be used? Or anywhere else? Or has anybody just sort of thought about that at all? That was all.
I mean, the storage of the Monday markets and for that matter, the, the food festival um equipment, if you like, is something that's been permitted by the council, that there are people, that there's no contractual arrangements between us and the Monday market operator. Um so, you know, we would obviously give due notice, it isn't going to happen overnight. This is going to take months, if not a year, to, to, to come to fruition. So there would be time for the, for the operators to make or turn to arrangements.
Davis, please.
Chairman, um just a moot point on councillor Fitz's interest in the trees. If the development or aid development went ahead that, and the trees were affected, they'd be moved somewhere else or will have a new plant somewhere else, wouldn't they? Maybe true gardens.
Chairman, I would prefer to leave that discussion to the planning application.
Well, it's a report.
Yes, but it's, it's just that, you know, clearly I don't want to, you know, that I don't want to get involved in an area I've got no expertise in and that is planning. Um but, but all I, all I, all I can say is, is that the, the planning process will most certainly look at the implications on any trees.
Councillor Margaret Fitz, please.
Thanks. I'll just say town centre trees are extremely contentious, but anyway. Uh my question is, um has there been any councillor input into this at all before this came here? Has any, you know, like, any, any input as to why, you know, this has come forward? It's just an opposite thing. Was there any councillor input?
Yes, there has, chairman. As you'll know, it, it was discussed not long ago at the town centre strategy steering group. Um and it, I think it's been to that steering group twice now. Um obviously, that's a member steering group. Um it was, it came twice because there was a change in membership and, and therefore the, the new members were briefed quite recently, you know, at the last meeting of the steering group.
I don't think that's quite right, Mr Cass. It came between, before the town centre strategy on two occasions, but it was only as a fait accompli, that's what we've decided to do, not any members' involvement. We couldn't change that decision.
Well, chairman, I know clearly we can't do anything without this committee's approval. So it, it, that's why it's coming to you this evening.
I would like to do, members, I think that we now have an asset management committee. I'd like to propose that this goes before the next asset management committee, where we can look at all the aspects. If any member's got concerns, they can write into the leader and explain what their concerns are. But I do think we would need more time to discuss this and it should go to the next asset management committee for discussion before we put it out to market.
Chairman, if you proposed, I would be happy to second.
Councillor Sally.
Thank you, chairman. I'm sorry I keep asking questions and saying things on this, but there's obviously a lot of disquiet and unease here. And certainly councillor Lesley Dedman has expressed my thought, which is what I was trying to get at at the beginning. Isn't the site worth considerably more with planning permission than it is without to this council? And I didn't really feel that I got the benefit to this council, other than throwing it back at you, chairman.
Thank you very much. I put that recommendation forward, but I think it's a central one, that if we discuss it properly at the next asset management committee, then you can go through all the aspects, what is going to happen. Also, which I'm concerned about, we've still got a town centre strategic, um car parking um programme being worked out, or report. We haven't got that or seen that report. And to dispose of car parking spaces before we've got evidence of what is likely to happen, I think is rather foolish. So I think if we could delay it by sending it back to the asset management committee, that would solve that problem. Yeah. Yep. So we had it proposed and seconded, so can we go to the vote on that? That we, oh, sorry, what's it? Councillor Corrin Bunce.
Thank you, chairman. My, my concerns are, as you've said, loss of car parking because all, all the spaces behind there are actually disabled spaces. So they would have to be replaced elsewhere, which restricts their use by other people visiting the town. That in itself causes a problem. We've already heard how well the car parks are doing and to sort of start reducing income by getting rid of car parking spaces seems a bit illogical. I also wonder whether we ought to be looking a little bit more entrepreneurial rather than selling off stuff for a quick, short gain and see how this would pan out, for instance, if, if there was a development there and we retain the freehold. Many councils that did that in the past, instead of selling stuff for quick, quick gain, which has been dissipated, and we've done that ourselves in the past, the money's come in, great, yeah, we'll do this, do that, spent it, and we've got no further income from it. Um very shrewd councils have been retaining freeholds, letting the land be developed and collecting very healthy ground rents. Now, have we looked at this issue? And maybe that's something that the committee you referred to could look at? Because, you know, we see here, we might get a hundred and fifty thousand for it. Well, that doesn't go very far, but if we're collecting ten thousand a year in ground rent, um in fifteen years' time, we've, we've got that hundred and fifty thousand and we're then in profit getting more, another ten thousand or whatever the ground rent is by then, going up. We've still got money coming in that we can spend. So I thi- I think in the past, we've been very short-sighted in selling off assets for that quick gain rather than looking at a long-term plan. And I think we all, you know, we've heard that other councils are now buying properties in other areas to collect the rents and looking at it in a more entrepreneurial way because they, like us, realise the government are cutting funding, they've got to make money from elsewhere and we've got to look at this. And I, I just think that all our assets should be assessed on the basis, instead of selling them, how well would we be doing if we retain the freeholds, sell the land, these hold for twenty-five, thirty years for what developments that are acceptable? Or apply for our own planning consents on land? You know, we do very well from the industrial estates that we retained control of. Let's start thinking that way again, rather than just getting short-term gains. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. I think that's why it would work very well.
I can ask, chairman, who makes up the asset management committee?
I understand it is our leader councillor David Flag. It's also the chairman of community councillor Sally Darren-Wilkes, myself and the vice chairman of resources councillor Trish Jameson. Chris Jamison.
Thank you, chairman. This report comes to you as a result of the decision taken by Policy Resources Committee on the 5th of April, where authority was given to officers to commence the statutory advertisement process set out in the report on that day and the outcomes to be reported back to a future meeting, which is why it's coming to you this evening. I won't go through over the full detail in the report, because I'm sure that most members, all members rather, would be familiar with the principles here. But essentially, paragraph 2.3 describes the approach that we've had from the Marine Coast Guard Agency, Maritime Coast Guard Agency, asking for an easement over a strip of land that we that we own. Now, I have put in front of members a revised appendix seven to the report. And the only revision to what you've got is appendix seven is the inclusion of this this blue strip shown alongside the access roads from Penny Way to the gates of the MCA. So I just wanted to do that, chairman, because previously I didn't feel that there was sufficient clarity as to where the that strip fitted into the overall picture of the of the open space and car parks. So they've sought an easement from us, so they could actually construct a footway or pavement along that section of our land. We wouldn't be disposing of the site, we'd retain the freehold. But in terms of the open space legislation, the granting of easement is classed as a disposal, even though technically it isn't. They've also asked for an easement over Penny Way to enable additional services to be laid into their site. And that would therefore de-risk the development of their site. And now, when that approach was made, we had open negotiations with them and paragraph 2.7 summarises the proposals that have been put to us. And this is the subject of a separate exemption report on the agenda this evening. But you'll see there that there's payments being proposed towards works at Highcliff Zigzag, Friars Cliff Coastal Path, the landscaping area.
Is your mic on?
So that the process, as when you come to disposal of the spaces, to advertise in the local papers, the fact you are proposing to do that and inviting people to object or comment on those proposals. And those advertisements are attached as appendices to this report. And also, so are the four representations that we've received, which are listed out in appendix five. You'll see that we've redacted the names and addresses of those respondents. The comments are not, so the officers' comments on those representations are then summarised at appendix six, which shows our comments on that. So, chairman, I'm happy to answer questions on the comments that we've made on the objections. But the recommendation is that the site, that's a subject to the formal agreement being entered into the public open spaces. Again, and also the open space that would be needed to be dedicated as highway in order to allow Penny Way to be made up to adoption standards should also be taken that way.
Do your report.
Chairman, I do have concerns about what is proposed there. That is a major car park for people visiting Friars Cliff beaches, walking along to Highcliff or walking along to Mutterford, especially when the Mutterford Car Park is full. Now, I'm concerned that when this work starts, it's going to cause problems with the access to that car park, especially if they're going to be digging the roads up. Now, if it can be done in the winter, when the car park is very little used, that would be.
Yeah, but you know and I know that these things change. Winter working up on the top there is not the best of times to try and get houses built. And I'm just concerned that it could cause problems. We've just heard that Penny Way is going to have to be made up into a more substantial highway. Does that include widening as well as service improvement or what? Thank you. Chairman, the only widening is onto this strip of land that measures about 73 square metres, yes. The rest of the of Penny Way is up to sufficient width as it currently exists. But the only widening is along that blue strip.
They also add that the timing will be part of the legal agreement as well. So they'll be subject to that condition in the days of legal easement.
Any other members want to comment? Any question? I'll put my mic on. I'm very happy to propose a set up.
Yeah, I mean, it's a small strip of land. Don't see any trees to be felled, which is always good news. I know it's termed as a disposal, but it is only an easement and I'm very happy to second it as set up.
Thank you very much. Sally Darren Wilkes, please.
Chairman, I think it's only fair that I do bring to attention of the committee that I've had some complaints from Highcliff residents about disposal of this land. But I also feel that having spoken to them about it, I have assured them that it is just that small strip of land for a footpath. And I believe everybody now is assured about it. Whether they'll be the same when we come to do it, I don't know. But those that I've spoken to, I think I've convinced them.
Thank you very much.
Now, just ask Sally a question. Do these people that complained, disposal may be the wrong word, but it is the lawful term. The council are still going to own it. We're not getting rid of it. So you've obviously told your people that.
I've explained as best I can, yes. And I believe I've satisfied them.
The vote now, please. resources, councillor Trish Jamison. There'd be vice chairman of community, councillor Margaret Phipps. And the third one, the vice chairman of resources, councillor Trish Jamison. Okay. Oh, all right. I'll do that. When I do that one as chairman of that. So I'll do the Dorset Waste Partnership.
Sorry, chairman, can I just clarify? As a committee, you're only, I've listed all of the appointments to the outside bodies, but they are split across two committees. So you only need to focus on those that are a point of where the appointment says chairman of the resources committee or the vice chairman of resources committee. So you have one seat plus a deputy seat.
I take the seat for the Dorset Waste Partnership. It would be the vice chairman of the, I saw any.
Sorry, I can clarify then, chairman, you're taking the seat on the committee and your vice chairman is taking the deputy? Or is it the other way around?
The vice chairman will be the representative and you'll be, as chairman, you'll be the deputy.
One is the Red House joint, Red House Museum. And I propose that Denise Jones will be a representative from the resources committee.
Okay. And chairman, if you don't mind, if I can just clarify, because councillor Mrs Jones was mentioned at the community committee, but I believe in that too. And councillor Geary, you were indicated as well. So between you, you'll be the representative on Red House.
Thank you very much. Revision centre, councillor Darren Wilkes.
Chairman, it was only I was going to say community. We put Nick from us and we assumed, we said we assumed that Denise would be, yes, the other one. Thank you.
Revision centre, I've got myself down and Wendy Grace, because we do appoint the two. Star Valley and Paul Partnership Joint Committee, I've got myself down, the vice chairman of the committee, Trish Jamison. And you only need two, don't you, from here? Cheshire Borough Council, East Dorset District Council Partnership Board, we've got the leader councillor David Flag. And I've got down, yeah, so Sally Darren Wilkes, is that right?
Yes, chairman, you have your David, the leader, Trish's deputy leader, and myself to represent you from this committee. Thank you.
Again, they are listed in paragraph 3.2. But again, if you can just confirm, they were, they've, those members have indicated they desire to be on there.
So the born with international growth programme is councillor David Jones. Growth Board, councillor Mrs Trish Jamison. Local Plan Steering Group, the leader councillor David Flag. I should be on it as chairman of resources and councillor David Jones. Councillor Sally Darren Wilkes.
Chairman, before we go to the vote, can I say that I received reports from two councillors that went to the DWP meeting? Well, when I say I had had copies of them, the reports that they put in, that was very useful to get to reports quickly. But it was two reports. I think we only need one if there's two people on a committee. And also, very importantly, as I said, getting reports very soon after the meeting was very useful, rather than waiting for it to go to the community committee. And I personally, from communities committee, would like to see the reports go into the newsletter so that all members are aware of what was discussed. Obviously, if there's anything sensitive, that will have to be redacted. But I really think it would be much better if we all knew what was happening at the meetings. And I wonder if you concur with that, please.
I'm very happy to support. And I'm sure the leader will be able to do that for us.
Chairman, I'm happy to take that on board. I think I'll need to liaise with the communications team in terms of the content of the newsletter, because I'm not quite sure it will fit with the new style of the newsletter. Clearly, all members were, and I'm not suggesting we're not going to do something, all members receive all agendas or access to all agendas when they come out. But I appreciate your comment about the timeliness of them. So we will ensure that there is some mechanism to make sure they're available when they come through. But it may not be the newsletter, but we will look at some way of actually communicating those out. If you will leave that with me, I will liaise with the comms team and ensure that happens.
David.
Right. Just quickly on that, correct me if I'm wrong, but Richard Jones produced an outside bodies report that we're supposed to fill in if we attend an outside body. And the idea being that it goes back to you for inclusion in the newsletter.
No, it was to go to, forgive me, that that was previously the process, but now it's changed again, actually, that it's now to go into the relevant community, relevant committee, so that the whole of that committee receive them and actually digest them in a formal, formal way. One of the concerns is, I think, with the newsletter, that we're not sure whether all members are actually able to access it and are and have that and digest it and keep it as a record. So the agenda, the idea through the committee reports, is that it's actually formally received by you, it's documented, it's part of the history, it's on the website, and you can keep that. You're right, there is that pro forma, though. We have maintained that pro forma.
So how do all members know what's going on? Because in the past, the old portfolio holders used to do a report for all members. You're saying it just goes to the committee member, the outside, like resources, these people on the outside body just report to res.
It goes to the resources committee, but all members receive notification of every agenda that is published electronically. So in the same way that you receive a newsletter electronically, you can receive notification of the agendas electronically. But I appreciate the timeliness issue.
Margaret Phipps, please.
My whole point is that everybody should see them as they're reported back. So we're all aware. Because, you know, six weeks later, when you have the next committee meeting here, there might have been things in that people need to know about or would like to know about.
Chairman, I'll liaise with Richard regarding this. My initial, my initial thoughts were that the reports would come back to the committees. And as all members of this council have access to the committee agendas, they would all be able to see those reports from the outside bodies. But if the suggestion is that we need them quicker than the six week period, then we need to look at how we're going to get those out. So I will liaise with Richard as regards to an alternative method of getting them out quicker.
Thank you very much, Lee. Councillor Margaret Phipps.
Can I just go back on this issue of either there might be two or three people that attend a meeting? And this has just come highlighted where Trish and I went to Dorset Waste Partnership. Both of those were very efficient and did a report, but of course, they weren't the same. So we need to perhaps be clear that if two or three people attend a meeting, then you just decide between you who's going to do the report presumably and agree with the other people that that is the report. Is that how we're going to do it? And then it gets submitted? Yeah.
Chairman, if I'm, I think the guidance actually recommends that action, actually, so that you do work together. And in the name, you put both of the councillors who are relevant, and you run it past maybe any officers that may be present at that meeting as well to ensure the accuracy. So I think that is already in the guidance.
Maybe go to the vote on that. The next item, agenda 10, is the plan. And what we do need to add to that, please, is the resolved consideration from the minutes of the last meeting, if that could be added. Vice chairman councillor Trish Jamison.
Just as it's your first meeting, the forward plan is a rolling document, so it will be updated at each meeting. So it's for information only. But obviously, it's tweaked as and when decisions are made, as you made earlier in the meeting, chairman.